By phone number. Uh, could, could they identify themselves?
Now we're up to three. What's the, there's a star number you have to do to unmute yourself on the phone on Zoom?
Star six.
Star six.
David, I'm not sure if one of them is Dave Delkor.
Oh, don't know.
Yeah, I don't either. Just guessing.
Hello?
Hello.
Oh, I think I unmuted. Okay, so I, I did it. So this is Noreen.
Thank, thank you.
Now, how do I get back on mute?
In the lower left-hand corner of your display, there's a microphone. And if you just click on that microphone, it should have a red. Strike through.
I think she's on phone, so I think star six again on the phone.
Yeah, 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 stars. I'm sorry, star six again.
Okay, well, why don't we get the meeting started? It started, it is five thirty. Uh, so I'm going to call the meeting of March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two to order. And um, the first item on the agenda is adjustments. And I do have one adjustment to request of the commissioners, and that is uh, to move the presentation by Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission. Um, municipal check-in to uh, right after item number three, which is public comment. So to take that up before old business. Anyone, everyone okay with that? Tom? Yeah, okay, I think we're, we're okay with, with that, so we will move them. Uh, Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission to uh, right after a public comment. Which is the next item on the agenda, unless, does anybody else have adjustments, Tom?
Yeah, uh, just wanted you to, we do have a new member. Uh, that doesn't happen very often, so I thought perhaps you could welcome Becky and let her introduce herself.
Okay, so why don't we do that? Uh, welcome Becky, I know you've uh, been in another meeting, but why don't you introduce yourself and um, we also, I think, have on the city council agenda, potential appointment of uh, other planning commissioners.
Yeah, there, there are two, there are two candidates.
So anyhow, Becky, do you want to just say hi and introduce yourself quickly?
Uh, sure. Hello, I'm Becky Wake. Uh, moved to Berry, it was almost two years ago. Um, I live up on Marcel Avenue, uh, and it's great to be here. Thank you for letting me join the commission. I look forward to working with you all.
Well, uh, welcome, and uh, we, we do have a lot of work in front of us, so we're glad to have be getting towards the having a full commission. So next item is public comment. Is there any uh, public comment? Uh, anybody on, who's, who's not a member of the commission who wishes to comment on something that is not on the agenda? Okay, I am not hearing anything, so I think the next item is the uh, Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission Municipal Check-In, and I saw Claire is uh, is on the call, so I could turn the floor over to Claire and, and we can uh, hear from you, and, and then if we have any questions or discussion, we can follow with that.
Great, uh, thank you. Thank you so much for uh, providing time on your agenda this evening. Um, for this and, and providing the opportunity to, to join you remotely. Uh, my name is Claire Rock. I'm a senior planner with the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission. And I'm joined here by um, our assistant planner, Blaine Hoskins, who joined CVRPC late last year. Um, so the reason we asked to be on your agenda this evening is because the RPC has a statutory responsibility to conduct to consult with each regional, uh, with each planning commission in our region at least two times within eight-year town planning cycle. And we look to this opportunity as um, a way to share information about the RPC programs and the services that we offer. And um, also, it gives us a good opportunity to hear about the type of work that you're working on. Um, and um, it helps us understand, you know, where we might be helpful to you in your local planning efforts. Um, and we'd also love to hear from you if there's any training opportunities that you would find helpful. Um, as we um, can use that information in structuring future uh, training and education opportunities. At the regional level. Um, so the last time we um, visited with you um, was uh, back in February of two thousand and eighteen. Um, that was a more formal consultation, um, where uh, staff provided a report which summarized the two thousand and fourteen town plan. Um, and we also did have an opportunity to meet with some of you following the local adoption of your two thousand and twenty municipal plan. Um, where uh, at, at that time Berry City did request confirmation and approval of your local planning process by the Regional Planning Commission. And part of that um, process involved um, a consultation component. Um, as many of you may know that um, that approval and confirmation by the Regional Planning Commission is optional. But um, most municipalities do choose to seek that as it makes um, your town uh, more eligible town eligible and more competitive for funding and incentive programs. Um, and that's the main reason why we say, um, or why we receive requests from the majority of the towns within our region. Um, there are some additional reasons, um, that towns would do that, and those are specified in state statute under section forty-three fifty. I won't read those off specifically, um, but if folks are interested, um, there's a, there's a reference there. Um, to take a look at. Um, most of you are probably aware that the mission of the Regional Planning Commission is to assist member municipalities in providing effective local government and to work cooperatively with them to address regional issues. And we do this in a variety of different ways. Um, I was just going to share with you um, some of our different programs and projects that we worked on, um, to give you kind of a snapshot and example of some of the work that we do. Um, uh, one of the ways that, that we um, work in Vermont is in the absence of local uh, county government. Uh, the Regional Planning Commissions kind of fulfill that role somewhat, and we serve a link between um, local, state, and, and federal government. Um, and we hope to foster that co-op- cooperation on, on regional issues. Um, we do implement a variety of planning programs, projects, and partnerships. Um, and so same as with um, the uh, the municipal level, the Regional Planning Commission is obligated to maintain a regional plan, which is similar um, in the types of uh, topics it has to cover. Um, the region, the Central One Regional Plan will expire in two thousand and twenty-four, so in the next cut, over the next couple of years, we'll be um, undertaking a concerted effort to update that regional plan, and we very much um, would invite you and, and welcome, you know, your participation as that regional plan is updated. Um, we did recently um, work on a collaborative effort with other regions to undertake uh, the West Central Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. Um, and, and that is a key component um, for economic development projects um, to be funded under the EDA program. And so that program, I mean, that project will wrap up shortly, and at that time, that West Central Economic Development Strategy will help fill in the last piece of the puzzle, so all regions in Vermont will have that comprehensive economic development. Um, strategy in place. Um, other projects that we've worked on recently, uh, we can help serve in a consultant role. Um, we have worked with the town of Orange and Woodbury to update their municipal plans. And we're currently assisting with Middlesex and Moretown to update their zoning regulations. So we are available to serve in a consultant capacity for some of those municipal planning projects. Um, we do manage a variety of different programs. Um, one of them being, one of our main ones is our Community Development and Land Use Program. This is principally funded with uh, money um, from the Agency of Commerce and Community Development. And um, with this funding, we undertake our reviews of municipal plans. We provide trainings. Uh, and assistance, um, and we also come out and visit with uh, the member municipalities and share information, you know, about our services and so forth. Uh, we have a transportation program that is overseen by our Transportation Advisory Committee. And one of their main roles is to help prioritize transportation projects. Um, uh, throughout our region for state funding. Uh, we also represent, have a representation on the Green Mountain Transit Board. We have an emergency preparedness and response program. Um, that is funded through uh, emergency management um, funding. And with that, we help in the assistance and development of local hazard mitigation plans. And we have other activities to help municipalities prepare for and respond to disasters in the event that those things happen. Uh, we are undertaking a new program this year, um, and it is watershed-related. Um, we will be uh, or have been recently designated as a Winuski River Basin Clean Water Service Provider. Um, and in this capacity, we'll be helping um, with the rollout of water quality projects um, throughout the Winuski uh, basin. Um, and this is primarily um, to help ensure that we um, as a state are helping move towards our clean water goals. Um, another new project um, or program that we are just starting up is our Climate and Energy Program. Uh, this is focused on direct assistance to towns in addressing resilience and energy efforts. Um, and we have staff available to assist municipalities um, that can provide information, technical assistance, and direct support in implementing projects that address the strategies that are outlined in the Vermont Comprehensive Energy and Climate Action Plans. Um, we can also help with developing enhanced municipal energy plans and locate funding and resources um, to help address the variety of different requirements and standards that are um, uh, being proposed um, at the municipal level. Um, you know, one of those examples that, um, the resources that are available um, is if you're planning any updates to any municipal buildings. Um, there's a new opportunity to undertake a free energy assessment on those municipal buildings. Uh, it's a partnership with Efficiency Vermont and the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. And during that consultation, um, an energy expert will work with the town staff to identify and prioritize energy savings um, that can be utilized in municipally-owned um, buildings. Um, and if you're interested in that project, I'd be, uh, or those services um, or any of these services, I'd be happy to direct you to that staff person, um, who can help assist with that. And the one other project I just wanted to highlight before I just talk about a couple of other services is our Brownfields Program. Um, we have recently received new funding from the Vermont Agency of Commerce and Community Development, the Department of Economic uh, through the Department of Economic Development, um, where we can help. Um, uh, the, the funding will be targeted towards bringing abandoned and underutilized sites back into reuse. Um, and we have grant funding available to undertake environmental site assessments and corrective action planning on those brownfield sites. And um, uh, your very own Janet Shatney serves on that committee, which we're very thankful um, for her participation with that. Um, couple of other things, um, just wanted to touch upon real quick before I just finish up here. Um, we do have a GIS department where we're able to provide services to your um, municipality in developing spatial and geographic data. Um, uh, through um, your dues that you pay to our organization. Uh, you have up to twelve um, hours of GIS services that can be utilized by your municipal boards and committees. Sometimes towns use those um, services to update their municipal plan maps, or maybe there's another project or another um, uh, mapping project um, that you've identified, and those services are available to you. Um, the other um, items that we have is real quickly. Uh, we do a variety of other data collection and inventory, so if you're looking for traffic counts or inventories on your municipal infrastructure, uh, we are available to help with those. We offer um, a variety of different education and training opportunities. Um, and so if there are any training opportunities um, that you see would be helpful to you, we would love to hear about what those are, or what some of your needs are. Um, as I mentioned before, um, it's really helpful to understand what your municipal needs are, and so that we can help ensure that um, any resources that we have, we can help um, dedicate those to the needs of our, our member municipalities. Um, so with that, um, I guess I would love to hear from you. I'd love to hear from the Planning Commission about what you're up to and the different projects um, you're currently engaged in, and the types of projects that you foresee um, being priorities for you in the next few years.
Thanks, Claire. Uh, I can start, but other commissioners, please uh, feel free to join in. Uh, right now, we're, we're chewing on sign, some sign regulations, and I don't know how that's all going to play out, but uh, that's kind of been something we've been discussing for a while, but probably on a more important scale is looking at zoning as it relates to housing. And I'm sure you've heard plenty about housing from all areas. Um, but we are going to start uh, taking a look at our zoning and seeing if, if there are things that can be done, both kind of uh, low-hanging fruit, um, and some longer-term things to look at to see if um, there are ways that we can have zoning make it a little easier to encourage housing without uh, you know, creating conflicts in the community as well, so. That's, that's coming up. I don't know if other uh, commissioners have anything to add or, or anyone else. But I think that's the next big thing. Amanda?
Thank you, David. Um, two things, just brief things. One is that I, I know I would be very keen to interest in any training that you offer. I'm just always curious to learn more to support my work as a commissioner. And the second is, um, I didn't, I didn't hear this mentioned, but um, I know that Berry City is, is currently down an assessor and a newly approved um, junior planner. So I don't know if CBRPC ever offers any recruitment support or anything like that. I know, I don't think we're the only community with vacancies in our, in our planning and permitting um, departments, and I know that we've been talking as a commission for a little while about how to, how to support Janet in her very hard work. Um, so I don't know if that's something that you ever have thought about exploring on a regional level. Um, but just, just mentioning it.
Great, and when you, they've got the recruitment services, is this assistance in kind of uh, sharing your um, openings um, through our networks, or is there another type of service you were thinking with relation to recruitment?
Uh, that's probably a, a, a good start, but again, if there are other communities, and I have heard of a few other communities looking to hire in that area, if there are other communities, I don't know if there are more regionalized solutions um, like doing a little more recruitment at grad programs and saying, hey, you could do these cool jobs in Vermont at these variety of places, uh, or, or anything like that, something that could band together resources and, and put a number of these positions on the table for people um, to come to Vermont or take them, something like that.
Yeah, yeah, that's um, uh, uh, very kind of like an interesting approach. We do have um, some contacts with some of the area universities. Um, and we have um, advertised through those channels, and so um, that's definitely an area where we could, um, you know, share those, those avid, those channels with you. Um, but I'll definitely take um, that information back to our executive director and share that with her. Um, as this is a way that we're kind of looking at, how can we potentially um, if there are multiple towns looking for similar services, how could that opportunity work, you know, at a regional level, so? Um, uh, appreciate um, your inquiry there.
Thanks, uh, Michael, you have your hand up?
Do, um, right, I, I, I'm not sure exactly the extent to which this has an impact on what CVRPC might do, but there were two things that I want to, um, to bring up in terms of our future plan. Um, and they both have a lot to do with the way that we managed during the, uh, the two thousand and twenty plan. Um, the first is that we were really not hoping that this plan that we made in two thousand and twenty was going to, you know, exist for eight years. Our hope was definitely to return to doing a um, a, 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 a plan that involves a lot more um, involvement from the community before that timeline ran out. And the second part was, what we really, um, what, what, what I would like to see, whatever we choose to do, is make sure that we have more public engagement as part of our, you know, process of creating a plan. And I expected that someplace that CVRPC might be able to offer some, you know, some resources and guidance. Um, the, when we created the two thousand and twenty plan, it was with, you know, the, the idea was, you know, try to get some plan done. It was with minimal outreach, and I'd like to make sure that whatever we do create, you know, doesn't go down that road again.
Great, yeah, I mean, that is, that's definitely an area which is so important in the planning process and um, you know, as, as you're considering kind of, you know, uh, your timeline for that project, we would um, love to talk with you and share. Um, you know, the resources that we can share with you is kind of part of your member services, and um, we can also help identify some uh, particular um, uh, funding opportunities. Um, where we could assist you in applying for those funding to kind of give a, a more extensive kind of assistance and facilitation in your community engagement. Um, so there are some various options, um, you know, available that we'd definitely be happy to speak with you about, and so um, please, please be in touch, and, and uh, we look forward to, you know, uh, talking with you more about how we can help with that.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Steve, you have your hand up? We need you to unmute.
Sorry, uh, yeah, as the question of the, uh, or discussion of the assessor came up, I just give the planning commission a, a very current update. We have, uh, I don't want to say, while we reposted uh, the position, have increased the salary offer by ten thousand dollars. Uh, we're trying to be far, much, it was far more, just pro- more proactive. Uh, under, undergoing a whole new um, solicitation cycle, uh, we've, we've, um, including indeed, um, all of the more routine sites, uh, even, um, um, no, I forgot the other national, um, website. Um, in the, in the, the frustration is that in the probably eighteen months we've been advertising, we got one applicant, uh, who actually was, uh, uh, had uh, signed a contract, uh, two days, the, the Friday before he was supposed to arrive, he backed out. Uh, was coming from California. Um, very, very frustrating. Um, there, see, there appears to be a dearth of um, uh, assessors out there, uh, it, it, at least from my perspective, feels like it's a dying art. Um, we've, we've reached out to Berry Town to see if they wanted to consider a, a joint contract again. They're not interested. Had actually, uh, had discussions with Bill Frazier in Montpelier. They wanted to, and Bill was interested in considering a, a joint assessor, but um, uh, they've actually, uh, by as much luck as and good fortune, they've actually, uh, brought on a consult, uh, actually consulting assessor. So they're interested in a joint approach, um, has disappeared, and we, we really weren't actually sure that one assessor could work, could, could service both municipalities of the size, so. And then on a, at least on an interim basis, uh, we have uh, brought back um, Heather Grandfield to spend two days a week in the planning office to help Janet. Uh, particularly as we're dealing with, uh, the upcoming workload, both permitting and uh, rental uh, property registrations and so on, so. We're trying to manage through this, but it's a challenge, uh, but I wanted to give the commission an update on what we're doing.
Great, thanks, thanks for the update. Do we have anything else for, uh, Claire? Anyone? Okay, if not, uh, thank you very much. Show is very helpful presentation, and I suspect we will be in touch.
Great, well, thanks again, and if it was okay with you, I might just listen in on, on your discussion about zoning, as it's always really informative and helpful for us to learn more about, um, what you're up to at the local level.
Great, thank you. So, uh, moving on in the agenda, we're now at old business, and the first item is uh, the minutes from the January twenty-seventh meeting. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the minutes? Uh, Amanda, uh, and Jackie second. Uh, are there any uh, amendments or questions or adjustments to the minutes?
I don't think Jackie's seconding, David.
Oh, Jackie, did you have something else?
No, I, I guess I can second, um, though I do have some corrections.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to get it on the floor, and now if anybody has uh, questions or corrections, now would be the time uh, to bring them forward. You know, so now Jackie.
Uh, I just wanted to note that on the um, question that we're dealing with tonight on signage, I don't think it indicated that, that Tom had also voted in the uh, with for that signage change. It just indicated that Dave and I had voted for it, and then Amanda and Michael were opposed, but I think it, it was a three-two vote.
Yeah.
It's true, I, I, I thought that that was implicit in that he had made the motion, but I can add that to the list if it makes it clear.
You can make a motion, but you don't need to vote for it, do you?
Nope.
No, you do not. That's why I was saying, I, I can add it if it makes it clear.
Okay, thanks. Uh, are there any other uh, adjustments or questions? So if there are not, um, maybe we could take a vote on, on the, on the minutes with the amendment suggested by Jackie.
Okay.
Oh, yeah?
Uh, just, um, who, who made this, the motion to approve? I didn't get that, I'm sorry.
Oh, Amanda.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, all in favor of, please raise your hands. Or, or actually, I think we have to do this by roll call, don't we? Because it's a Zoom meeting. So, um, Amanda?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Michael? Yep, Jackie?
Hi.
Uh, Becky?
I think I'll abstain since I wasn't a member at the last meeting.
Okay, and I think, and I vote aye, so we have adopted the, um, approved the, the minutes as, as amended. Next item on the agenda is um, window signage. Which seems to be on all of our agendas for a while. Uh, so at the last meeting, as in the minutes, uh, we discussed window signage. Um, had a proposal that had a three-two vote, but three, three votes is not enough uh, to adopt a change in, in, uh, because we have seven-member board, even though there's vacancies, four votes are required. So I guess, um, as a review of the last meeting, we did approve changes to temporary signage. And that should be scheduled for a public hearing so that we can move that, but we still have uh, window signs on our agenda, and just as a review, Janet had made uh, some, offered some thoughts, recommendations at the December meeting. And then we took this up again at the January meeting and, and voted on, on something a little different than what Janet proposed. Uh, so I don't know what folks want to do at this point, if we want to revisit either of those things or uh, whatever, but in, in my opinion, um, the, this, the current, the current uh, ordinance is not working very well. And um, we need to provide some clarity to the city so that the city officials can do what, whatever they need to do to manage or enforce the ordinance. Uh, so, I guess I'm hoping we can figure out something. So I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that, and, and I see Amanda's hand up, and then, uh, and then Tom, and then Steve. So I'll start with Amanda.
Thank you, David. Um, I would, if, so if I'm understanding our conversation from last month correctly, our stumbling block did not include the vinyl lettering uh, prohibition that, that is currently in ordinance, and that we are all comfortably agreed on that. Um, so I think that is an easy first step forward for us to strike that piece. Um, perhaps not. Uh, Michael may have something to add to that, um, but, yeah.
I, 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 I just wanted to add that the, the planning commission has already, you know, I, I had a motion passed to remove that language.
All right.
That, that's correct, right? Sorry.
I believe so. I believe so, I think that the, the stumbling block, as I understood it, was, you know, we, we had. What we voted on was, was kind of removing the dimension requirements. For window signs, but not allowing them to cover more than 40% of the window space. And I think the stumbling block was. Whether there should be a requirement for a clear background or not. Again, correct me if I'm wrong, there's two people who voted against that proposal, I think that was the problem. But correct me if I'm misunderstanding. So maybe we can, can work on that, but. Let's see, I know Tom had his hand up, so.
Very briefly, David, sorry, I did, I did just glance at the minutes again and the motion that failed last time included striking. The vinyl language as part of the motion, there was no separate motion to strike the vinyl language. So I just want to be clear, I don't think we have struck the vinyl language yet as a separate motion.
I'm sorry about that.
Yeah.
I wanted to triple check and I just went back in the minutes and I did, so that is not yet.
Yeah, I don't think we've done anything with the window signs, but I think we agreed on a lot of things, but not enough to have a successful. Motion pass.
Temporary sign stuff all went.
Tom.
Uh, thank you, David. Yeah, I can't even tell you how disappointed I was that we spent three meetings on this. When a lot of things come before the planning commission, I look to Jackie, I look to David. You know, I can be political, I can be personal and that's where this is going and that's where it's going in a lot of committees. And I can go there too. I mean, I'll, I'll play the game. I'd play nice, you know, listen to the most experienced, most tenured members on the committee, take their lead. You know, I had a strong position on how I thought this should look, I compromised. You know, and I think we just need to get this behind us, what we are doing right now, the ordinance is a train wreck. Okay, now there are certain businesses in town, no matter what we pass, they, they're not in compliance. And we've identified those and obviously we'll have to move to an enforcement phase. But there are other businesses in town that also find themselves on the wrong side of our current ordinance. And believe me, I don't think it's window signs that are holding back our economy or preventing our downtown from being occupied in Berry. And, you know, we've got so much important work to do, I would just like us to pass this, you know, Amanda, Michael, you know. Whatever compromise we need to reach, we need to go there and we need to get this done and we start, need to start moving on to some important work. So, thanks.
Thanks, Tom, Michael is next up.
Honestly, I didn't raise my hand to respond to Tom.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I recognize that, what I mean is that I may have to pause for a moment. I think that. I would just like to recognize that. There was a compromise position that we could have come to at the last meeting. Tom decided not to compromise and that was why we ended up where we were. I did not know at the time that that meant that the motion would fail. I only realized after looking at our bylaws, if I'd known at the time, we could have talked up through, certainly.
So what was the compromise that could have succeeded?
This is not why I raised my hand, that, that was. I just want to acknowledge that compromise is something that comes from all parties. What I wanted to say when I raised my hand was that. I've been very clear all along about what I think the best outcome for the ordinance is. And I'm doing my very best to not be strident about it. And I'm going to continue to do that, I completely will not bring politics into this and I don't think it's appropriate to suggest that others do. What I've said all along is that I think that the ordinance is well structured. I think that if you know what the rules are, it's easy to comply with and it's easy to enforce. The problem here is that people did not know what the rules were and I have complete sympathy with that. But it doesn't mean that we need to change the rules and so. Again, I'm open to some form of compromise on this, but my, you know. My starting point is, it has not been made clear to me from the testimony that we've received, that there's a reason to make any changes to the window science ordinance. Again, open to compromise, but I wanted to put out there that it's not coming from a political perspective. It is looking at the ordinance and saying, are our changes going to improve the ordinance or not? And I have said at every turn that I think that we are weakening the ordinance in a way that makes it less effective. I also would like to see us pass some form of changes to this ordinance. My feeling is that we have already made the changes that we need to make. To the extent to which we get rid of the prohibition on vinyl signs, then I think our window signs are in the clear. Then we have the ability to have people promote their businesses using the windows and it will be really effective. That is what I would like to see, to have the change only be the removing prohibiting the vinyls material.
Okay. Steve, you have your hand up? Now, unmute, please.
This wasn't where I was going to start, but I just thought I would respectfully disagree with Michael when he says. Any ordinance is easy to enforce, it's not, enforcement is a difficult job. It's usually an adversarial type thing and I don't care what ordinance you have. If there are violations, it's not easy, it's not, it's not, it's easy to issue violations or whatever or citations, but. Issuing a citation is only the first step enforcement and the, the battles that can develop after that are not easy to deal with. They're actually a distraction. If you want to respond to that, Michael, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify that I did not say it was easy to enforce, I said that it was easy to observe if you know what the rules are. And so I agree with you.
I, I'm pretty sure you said enforce, but I, I, this is not my intent, I, I made my point about enforcement and. That's part of the battle that we're, we're, part of the issue we're dealing with here. Commissioner Lozon is correct. It's, it's. It's, it's been problematic downtown, I think from the administration side, we've been waiting for. Clarification to come from the planning commission, I can assure you. We will move ahead with enforcement, whatever the commission decides, I'm strongly recommending that the commission. Adopt what, what was thought to have been approved at the last meeting. But for a majority of the, of the, of the body. That the 40% window, window signage and the, the no height restriction. And no size or dimensional restriction, I mean, I think that's a step in the right direction. And continuing to, even with that, there are signs that we know downtown that are going to have to be enforced against. But. I, I think that's a step in the right direction and without some relaxation, I think it has a recipe, if we're looking for. The planning commission and the council is looking for strict enforcement. We can do that, I think it's going to be in the long run, more harmful than productive. And I'm just here to say from the administration standpoint, I highly urge the planning commission to. Adopt what you thought you had adopted at the last meeting.
I'm sorry, Tom's hand is up and then Amanda.
Thank you, David. And Janet, could you just, I, I don't recall that you had. Any objection or concern with regard to what we thought we passed at the last meeting? I don't think you did and I just want to make sure before I make that statement, we, I ask you.
Well, thank you for that, Commissioner Lozon, I still, I was okay with it. I personally still feel that the, the statement that we make under miscellaneous window science must have a clear background. I think it's too broad of a statement, I think it opens, it's going to open my office up for interpretation and. I know we hashed it out last time, but if we could come up with. Something else or if we all come to an understanding of what is clear. That certainly would be helpful. Now, does the sign have to be see-through? What is the intent and what do we think is appropriate? Otherwise, I was on board with everything from last month.
Okay, but so give me a suggest, I mean, clear to me is pretty clear.
Right, so.
It's not translucent, it's not opaque, it's clear. So what, what is it about that, that, that you think? Would, would give your office heartburn with regard to interpretation or enforcement?
Sure, so y'all know what the posh big circle looks like next door to us, right? Next door to City Hall, that is not a clear background. So, say they still want to do that great big circle with the word posh in the middle. Does all that white space have to then be clear? That's what I think about, what is the clear background?
Okay, and if I could respond to that, Janet?
Sure.
I thought that would be part of the, the 60%. In other words, if you've got a big circle covering 80% of the window. Well, then you have a problem, I thought we had discussed and all agreed. That it was the signage area and maybe I'm, we've had a lot of discussions about this, maybe I'm having the wrong. Maybe I'm recalling the wrong discussion, but I remember someone, Commissioner, talking about. The letters themselves and we said, no, we're not going to get into playing that game where you measure the letters, you know, you measure. The, the area that the letters occupy. And so in the case of a. You know, in the case of the, the posh sign, not to single them out, but that was the example you used. If that was more than 60%, excuse me, 40%, I'm getting it backwards. Signable areas 40% maximum, so if that was more than 40% of the signed area, they'd have an issue.
They would have an issue because we actually have a portion of the ordinance that talks about the sign area. And how to calculate what is the sign area.
So would we refer back to that?
Because it says the calculated sign area of a non-rectangular rectangular sign. Will be adjusted to compensate the following, no adjustment if the amount of negative space within the sign area is less than 30%. A 15% reduction if the amount of negative space within the sign area rectangle is at least 30% and less than 50%. So that's where having a clear background and determining what is the negative space, if there is going to be any. Is, is, I just want clarified, that's all.
Okay, so would you be, would you be comfortable and would it be? Consistently enforced and, and easy to reference, consistent to enforce, would you be comfortable if? Everything was referred back to that because that is in fact the, the only. Uniform guidance in terms of how we measure sign area.
It would certainly help if we could make the reference back to that, but on its face, that statement says clear background. And. If we could just get to a point where I know what y'all mean by clear background.
Well, how about if we said?
No negatives, no negative space?
How about if we simply explained, you know, that window science shall, you know, window sign area shall be measured in accordance with. And then we refer back to that. So again, in the case of the posh sign that you reference. If that circle was more than 40% of the window area, they'd have an issue. And at least you'd have a dot, you'd, so instead of saying clear background, why don't we? All of the concerns were about what percentage of the window are we blocking? That's, that's, everyone agreed that the intent was that we wanted to keep, we wanted to maintain the ability for passersby. To see into the business and, and we landed on 40%. So if we just say, look, that 40% drives everything and when you're calculating that 40%. We will refer you, rather than talk about clear background. We'll simply talk about the window area that you're occupying and refer you back to that section which you're familiar with. Or refer the, you know, the, the applicant back to that section which you're familiar with. And which you use, you know, daily on others' signs.
The sign area calculation is inherently understood, it would be fine to make a reference to it. No place else, it's one of those general conditions that you have to follow.
So you'd be okay with that?
I'd be okay with that, I don't think it, it answers my question. Sorry.
While we'd strike.
What, what did we want to achieve last, last month?
You know, one of the problems with a clear background could be, you could put a three-by-five sign. On a three-by-five clear piece of vinyl. Attach it to the window and you could argue that it has a clear background, you just can't see it. You could make the, the clear background an inch square around the rest of the sign and would that be a clear background? It's a really ambiguous thing and I think that's what Janet is struggling with. So, you know, that's, that's the challenge, but I see Amanda's hand is up and then Michael and then Steve.
Thank you, David. Just to clarify briefly my position from our last meeting that led me to vote against the motion as suggested. My struggle was to some degree with the language that was proposed in an attempt to address the question of the clear. Background. And also with that in tandem with the raise to 40%, effectively doubling the, the sign coverage of the current ordinance. So what I said in the last meeting and what. I continue to believe is that there needs to be a way to allow the type of cut signage. That appears in a number of downtown windows in which, as I understand it. The sign would measure and not include, as you were clarifying, as you were calling it Janet, negative space. And my understand is that, or at least, let me be specific here, my hope and intent is to maintain. A preference toward that negative space, which would maintain and increase visibility into storefronts and not simply have. Say, in theory, 40% of a. Window completely blank covered, and I know we discussed that people can do what they can do on the inside of a window, but that's not what we're. Addressing here in planning commission, we have no control over that, what we're talking about is signs on the windows themselves. So Janet, with that, my follow-up question to you is I, and I agree that transparent background is, is not as helpful as it should be, but to be frank. Neither is visibility within the space because visibility is different for all of us at different heights and, and. Looking from different angles, I think that's a very vague term that someone could claim, well, if you get on your knees, you can still see them, that's visible. So I think that is going to create problems again in vagueness, that word visibility, so. I hope that's clarified it a little bit, my follow-up question to you then Janet is, am I understanding, you just read off. The sign dimension calculations that include provision for negative space, if a sign contains a certain amount of negative space. That negative space is then subtracted from the overall percentage?
That is correct.
My understanding is correct, okay, so then in theory, you could have a window sign measured. At 60%, but including negative space that would then reduce it to within the 40% and would. Maintain some level of visibility because it has that see-through negative space.
Can I, I just interject, I'm sorry, I assume negative space is an act synonymous with clear space?
That's how I'm understanding it, Janet will have to.
Okay, I just trying to understand. Okay, I just trying to understand a term I haven't heard before. I'll have some comments on that, but I'll wait my turn.
That, that's how I am understanding it, and I think Janet will have to, will have to weigh in if that is the correct understanding for the, for the ordinance.
Yeah. Yes, um. We don't define negative space, but we, I think it's inherently understood, right? Signable area.
Janet, not to, not to, not to. I see, I don't think the term negative space is clearly understood. And um, again, I'll speak that later, but I just wanted to make that observation.
Okay, um, Janet, do you have anything to add at this point, or can I move on with questions from, and comments?
No, yeah, go ahead with questions with, with others. Majesty, please, briefly finished, David?
Yeah.
If that is, if that is the understanding, if, as Tom suggested, we. Instead of trying to define transparent background or visibility, we simply say that the forty percent measurement shall refer back to that ordinance. And if my underst, if that understanding that I just suggested here is correct, that it would allow for. Open visibility through and calculate the forty percent, including that negative space, then that, that. That would resolve my, my difficulties with, with the way it was worded last month.
So that, so, so what you're suggesting, if I, to make sure I understand it, is that, that forty percent could be okay. So long as we address, refer back to the, how the sign is measured. And probably just say, um, you know, that for purposes of window signs, certainly negative space is considered to be clear. Uh, that might help.
My, my difficulty was with, with combining the increase to forty percent. And the removal of clear language, no pun intended, about. What, whatever that, and I, I understand that Janet had trouble with the, um, was suggested difficulties with the transparent background. But if, if the current sign measuring provision, if we can refer back to that and include the negative space, that satisfies. For me, um, in a clear, concrete way, some of what we were trying to address by the visibility structure that I found could be very big.
Right, so, so would the idea be that that kind of statement would replace, so we would strike the clear visibility? And we would strike the vinyl letters and the clear background and just simply. Refer back and make certain that we, that any negative space is defined as for purposes of a window sign at a minimum is clear space that you can see through.
Yes.
So, okay, so I just wanted to make sure I was understanding what you're suggesting.
Yes. And I think that, I hope, I think that sort of, at least for me, I think that covers the basis, but obviously I have a little more work through, but that may be a, I think that's a good path forward anyway.
Good house suggested language, Amanda? Do you have suggested language in mind?
Yes.
Let's go ahead and rip it off and I'll try to write it.
All right, let me look, let me refer briefly back to the, the motion from last week and sort of carry part of that forward because. For me, that was the, uh, and I do want, we have other comments as well, but suggested language right now. Um, would include, uh, changing the coverage limit to forty percent. Um, striking B, C, and D, which were the measurements above ground, because I think we were all, because of the differences of window sizes and heights and agreement on that. Um, striking the vinyl lettering, um, section, and then. But I don't exactly know where this would fit, possibly under miscellaneous, but essentially say within this section for the purposes of calculating the forty percent window coverage. Um, refer back to, and then Janet had the, had the specific spot. Where negative space is used to determine that forty percent coverage.
So moved.
But we had a few comments, I think too, but that's.
Oh, you can, you can still have discussion, at least we'll get it out there, get it on the table, and then we can talk about it as in entirety.
Did, did my motion, is it clear for everyone?
Well, let's, let's, let's get a second and then, or was that your motion and Tom's second?
Let's, sure.
Fine with that. Okay, that just gets it on the table.
Yeah.
Could you repeat the mo, motion, please?
Yeah, so. But I, I thought it might have come out a little sorry, that's why I wanted to double check. Okay, so the, the motion would change the coverage limits to forty percent. Strike B, C, and D, which are measurements that regard to height above ground. Remove the first miscellaneous item, um, that does not allow for vinyl lettering. Uh, actually, as well as the second miscellaneous item that stocks about clear background because that was a confusing point. And within the, uh, within that section would add language stating that the forty percent window coverage shall be calculated according to existing. Um, rules and regulations and Janet has the exact number, I apologize that I, I do not to hand. Um, with the unders, so that would be the official motion and with the commission's understanding that, that that measurement includes provisions for negative space. That is the official.
And would you mind, Amanda, if we gave Janet a little bit of latitude? Um, you know, she wants to tweak the, your language just a little bit, we could ratify it our next meeting, assuming that this passes. Um, you know, she may just want to tweak it a little bit. I think we all understand the intent.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with Janet wording it in a way that, that makes the most sense to her and, and referring back to the specific things that it needs to, yeah.
It would be referring to calculating the sign area with the exact number is the only thing that I would, I would revise. Forty percent window coverage shall be calculated by. And then it's three one oh seven I.
Well, just in accordance with three one oh.
In accordance with three one oh, yeah.
Okay, so I think we have a motion that we've, we've clarified. Um, now at this point, I see that, uh, Michael and Steve have their hands up. So I'll, uh, let Michael speak first and then I'll go to Steve.
Um, Amanda, I just want to clarify, is, is your intent in this motion to? Uh, to maintain the clear background for signs, but just with a more, um, with a less subjective? Yeah, that's, that's not in this motion right now, which is, um. Like, you know, based on how it's defined, and so. My, my interest also is, I mean, from our last meeting, I, the compromise that we came to. Um, was changing, you know, removing the, um, the, 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 um, the buck of boundaries on sides of windows. Allowing any forty percent of the window to be covered, but keeping a, a clear background. Um, where I was lost in the compromise was, uh, was removing the, the clear background and that would happen again today. Um, and so. If we figure out a way to say that, I'll vote yes on this one. Um, but it's not in there right now.
So you have any suggestions for how that, uh, might, that clear background might be incorporated in, in a way that's not ambiguous?
Um, yeah, I would say we keep the language that says no clear background and then say, um, background refers to the negative space. Uh, definition as defined in three one oh seven I.
Okay, so that's, that's. Does that make sense to people? Uh, Tom?
Um, no, um, it doesn't. Um, you know, the intent was so, uh, imagine you had a banner. You have a, a six by eight window. And you, you have a banner, the banner has a white background, it's final. It has a white background and it has red letters. And it's a foot high, so imagine a six by eight window, six feet high, eight feet wide. And at the bottom, in the bottom one foot, you put this white banner with red letters and you apply it to the bottom of the window. Now, anyone walking by can easily see in, you've only, you're only coming up a foot. Uh, you certainly haven't even approached forty percent of the window space. And yet, because it isn't clear, um, that would be prohibited. So I think that's the, you know. I think Amanda, I, I think she did a good job of defining the, the issue. Um, and I think we further complicated because what, what you might as well say is that you have to apply individual letters. And that wasn't the intent, well, if you've got to have a clear background. That means the only way to get a clear background is to have a clear, you, you got a clear window. So you would have to apply individual letters and that would be your sign. Well, if it's, well, Michael, you're shaking your head, if it's colored, that's not higher, is it?
I don't, I, I don't understand the point that you're making exactly. Um, there are many ways to apply vinyl window sign that does not involve having a background that is visible. So I, I guess I just don't, I don't, I don't, I don't follow the, the argument, is what I mean.
My argument was that if you, yes, there are plenty of ways to do it. Not everyone chooses to do it that way, not everyone wants a clear background. So if someone has placed a window sign in their window. That allows for full visibility into the space that only occupies, for example, twenty-five percent of the window. Why do we care that the background isn't clear? Because all of the concerns, you know, having a clear background, I don't, I recall all of our discussions. I realize it's of high importance to you, but as far as many of the commissioners were concerned, myself included. I was more concerned about, uh, maintaining visibility into the space. And if it had a white background or a red background, uh, because they thought their sign might perhaps more, be more visible. And didn't occupy more than forty percent of the window space and allowed for visibility, I was fine with that. And I realize you're not, and I respect that you're not. But I thought Amanda's compromise was reasonable. Um, considering our past discussions.
Um, is that it, Tom? Let me, let me give Steve a chance to talk, you've had your hand up for a while.
So let me preface my remarks by saying, um, I know all of you are, are working hard to, 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 to find the right solution and. And in the best interests of, of the city of Berry. But with all due respect, I found the last fifteen minutes of discussion mind-numbing. Um, overly, uh, overly prescriptive to being a recipe for failure of signage and, and compliance with the property owners. Rather than a recipe for success. I really don't understand the obsession for visibility, uh, into the storefront or into the store. We, there are a number of stores down or, or, or structures downstairs, down street that have. Uh, drapes that are drawn across the front of the, of the building or the, their, their particular portion of a building. Um, I realize they're not, uh, necessarily retail, but nonetheless, there's no visibility, uh, beyond the window. There are other stores that have actually display areas, so you can see a few feet into the, uh, display area, but you really can't see into the store. Um, so again, I, I for one, don't understand the obsession with, uh, having, uh, clear, you know, having the ability to see into the store. But set that aside, um, if you, um, I would certainly support and urge the forty percent. Um, the increase to the forty percent sign area and the elimination of the height restriction and you, you kind of seem beyond more of that. But if you're saying a sign can occupy forty percent of the, uh, window space. Don't, don't get hung up on whether you can see through that sign or not, because you can see through the other sixty percent. And, and you're, when I said mind-numbing, you're, you're, you're getting, you're, you're gonna have to describe what you'd mean by negative space. Which is a foreign concept to probably many people, particularly store owners. Uh, if you can see through the other sixty percent, what difference does it make if you can see through the allowed forty percent? And most, if you look at most signs downtown, uh, I mean, I haven't gone down and done an inventory, but my guess is that when signs are made up. Uh, more frequently than not, they're made up with non-transparent backgrounds. They're not, they're not clear. Um, they're, they're, they're signs that are overlaid on whatever the, uh, the, uh, material is that makes up the background for the sign. I, I would urge you to just say, make it simple, just say, um, signs can occupy forty five, forty percent of the space. Uh, and, and just stay away from saying whether it's got to be clear, I mean, I, I can only imagine. If, if, uh, somebody has a sign and then, and then it gets into the, into the calculation of. Well, what is the clear space in each letter, or what's the clear space between letters? I mean, that's just. With all due respect, in my mind, that's just ludicrous, uh, and you're gonna have, you're gonna have store owners who are gonna go bananas over that kind of regulation. Um, and I, and I say it's a recipe for failure, not for success. And then my only other comment. I know there's been a section referenced, I can't, I can't remember what the reference number is, I haven't read it, but that, that is being used as the yardstick for determining area. And again, I don't know why it has to be any more complicated than tenth grade geometry. Um, the area of a circle, of a rectangle, a square, a triangle. Uh, every, I'll say most everybody knows how to figure area. And I don't understand why there has to be another set of rules for, for, um, figuring area. So with that, I'll harass.
Okay, uh, Michael had his hand up next.
Well. I initially raised my hand with the, uh, the goal of trying to find a compromise again. It is difficult when it seems like there is a side that is interested in shouting the other side down. And I don't even understand why there are signs in this. I mean, we have a different perspective on this policy in terms of what's the most effective. I. One thing I would like to add is that what we're talking about is not an ordinance that we're introducing, it's an ordinance that was adopted in twenty nineteen. And so, you know, if it is crazy and it is going to put people up in arms or it is impossible to deal with. I feel like this is something that we would have encountered at this point. What we have encountered is a small number of cases of people who are frustrated their signs are not in compliance. And as I said before, I completely sympathize with that. But again, I, 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 I need to be convinced that the changes are beneficial. And when you tell me that I'm ludicrous or that I am mind-numbing, it doesn't help, right?
Just to be, just to be clear, Michael, I didn't call you ludicrous or I didn't call you mind-numbing. I, that was my reference to the discussion, so I did, it wasn't personal.
Right.
And it was not directed.
As a person talking, I don't understand how I possibly could have taken it that way. So, but in, in any case, I would like to return to what I was saying. I want to find a place where we can agree. And if we, i, i, and the agreement is not going to be. I say, yeah, I completely agree, we should adopt the thing that I voted against last time, that seems unrealistic, right? So there are two separate variables that we're working with here. One is how much we can see through the sign and the other is how much of the window the sign covers. And I feel like we could change either of those things to make it work from my perspective in terms of like, what's gonna, you know, what's gonna be the best outcome. Um, but I think that we're at a, at a point where the size, the forty percent of a very large window, it's quite a lot of coverage. And I expect that on a lot of the storefront windows, it's high enough that it would go above eye level for most people walking past. So I think what we could, what we could look at is, could we have a smaller coverage area? Could we remove the boundaries and keep the coverage area at twenty percent? And.
Nope.
I. I am trying to find a compromise. The thing that failed last time was what you, what you want, Tom. The thing. That, you know, you were describing as Amanda's compromise, which I asked, is your intention to remove the clear background? And she said, no, I think it, it is the same as last time. I don't understand how we can expect a different outcome if we introduce the same thing. We have a new person voting. Obviously, that could change the outcome. But I, I would really like for us to stay within the realm of deciding what is, you know, what is a good policy and respecting everyone here. I mean, I don't want to force my perspective through. But I recognize that I, I'm not gonna go away from my perspective unless there's a, unless there's a good reason. And I feel like a lot of the, um, the evidence that people are saying now is exactly what we said in the previous meetings. So it's not clear to me where, you know, why do I change my vote? Nothing has changed.
Uh, Tom?
Uh, thank you, David. Um, Steve, hold on, I gotta, I gotta relish this for a second. Cause this is probably. Cause this is probably one of ten times in the last thirty years that I've disagreed with you, so I just got to take that in. The, so Steve, with the, I understand your concern about. Uh, the reference to the section that will measure the area. But if you want to say it to someone really simply. Like, okay, I want to put a window sign in, Mr. Manager, how do I do that? Don't cover more than forty percent of the window. Your sign area, don't let it cover more than forty percent of the window. And make sure, and make sure you maintain visibility into your space. That's all you have to say. So the, if someone had, for example, uh, vinyl letters and only vinyl letters. Their, their area, the area that their letters occupy could. In theory, occupy more than forty percent of the overall window space. Referring to that section, but. So I, so I think, you know, I think, don't get too hung up on that section because the easy way to explain it. Is don't, don't occupy more than forty percent of the window space and maintain visibility. And if you do that, uh, your sign will be approved. Uh, and with that, uh, you know, Michael, I took the compromise, uh. From Amanda, who, um, so I am willing to compromise. You know, at this point, David, I'd like to call a question. And, and unless, I, I mean, I haven't heard from you and Jackie and I apologize, I'd like to first. Um, but it, uh, you know, Amanda had an objection to some of the wording in. The, uh, last, um, motion, the one that failed last month. Um, she's offered this as a compromise and actually offered the motion, so unless she's going to vote against her own motion. Um, which you can certainly do, uh, as long as you and Jackie are, are agreeable. I understand, Becky, if you want to wade into this, my guess, you probably don't want to, uh, but we've got our four votes and we can move on.
Well, um, we've had the question is, uh, motion to call the question. Uh, is there a second to that motion? Jackie has seconded the motion, I think. Is, yep. So, so, um, now we have to vote on calling the question. Uh, so I'm going to do a roll call. Uh, you can either say aye or raise your hand. Uh, Tom. Amanda.
Aye.
Michael. Jackie. Becky.
Aye.
Okay, and I also vote, so we're calling the question, so now we're going to vote on the motion. Janet, do you mind rereading it just so we all remember?
Forty percent window coverage shall be calculated in accordance with section three, one, oh, seven, I. And that includes. Signable area, letter A is forty percent maximum. Letter B is struck, which is the width, letter C, which is the height is struck. Under location, letter D is struck. Uh, under miscellaneous, the applied plastic is struck. Window science must have a clear background is. Struck is what I wrote, if that's correct, Amanda. And then everything else stays.
Confirmed, that's, that's correct. Thank you, Janet.
Okay, okay, so we've read the motion, so, um, Michael.
Just, uh, just, um, when you originally made the motion, it also included the reference to those calculations.
I think she, Janet read that first.
Yeah, I.
Oh, that was, that wasn't, sorry.
That was the first part that Janet had, instead of the count, the wordage I used.
It's, it's in the other word, yeah. Um, Janet, can you send me that, that text exactly? I don't have it down in the form that you read it. Thank you.
So I think we're ready to vote now, so, um.
Give Janet latitude, I just wanted that in the record, that the motion did give Janet latitude to. Uh, to, to tweak the language a little bit if she needed to and then bring it back.
Yeah, and she, and she did also say that, that as of right now, the only tweak she sees, just to be clear, the only tweak she sees is putting the, the specific reference in that she just read it with.
Yep, I'm okay with that.
Okay, so, so let's, uh, let's vote. Um, so Tom.
Aye.
Uh, Amanda.
Aye.
Michael. Jackie.
Aye.
Becky.
Aye.
Hey, and I also vote aye, so I think that means the motion passes five to one, am I correct in my counting here? Okay, so, like, thank you, everybody, a challenging conversation, but we got through it. Steve.
Yeah, um, I have to go to get ready for tomorrow. I, I appreciate the time and the ability to, your tolerance for me to. Um, pro- provide input, provide remarks, um, and, uh. So with that, I'll say good night.
Okay, thank you, Steve. So our next item on the agenda. Is, um. Zoning as it relates to housing and it's actually a, a new business. An old business and, and we might actually be able just to kind of. Uh, combine the two, but at the last meeting, we talked about. Um, some low hanging fruit to talk about was zoning, which is density, parking and, um. Alternative dwelling units, things that we thought we could go through, uh, and maybe. Propose some changes that might help encourage. Additional housing, um, and things that won't take us along to study. But I was hoping that we could, you know, I don't think we're going to be able to get into, you know, the details tonight, but I was hoping. That we could think about how we're going to go about doing this. Depending on time, we might even want to schedule some work sessions in addition to regular meetings. Um, we might want to invite people from the housing task force. Who, some of whom are landlords and, and, and property owners who might have some insight on some of this. So, you know, that would be a thought for how to go about this is, is to just schedule some. Work sessions where we talk through some of these things without. Having to come up with, uh, you know, having a vote or any, and, and any action just other than discussion and then. Uh, we could devote time at, at the, at the regular meeting to. Doing what business comes before us if, if there are things that we need to, to address. So those are some thoughts that I had. But I'd love to hear from, from the other commissioners about how you might want to. Move forward and also Janet about workload and, and, and so on. So I will stop talking and, and Amanda has her hand up.
Amanda always has her hand up, thank you. Um, I, on the subject of, um, of density. Uh, specifically, I know that some meetings ago Janet had brought to us some possible areas to take a look at. That are currently zoned for sort of the. Thinnest possible density in, in some areas of single family home. That were still fairly close to the downtown and that the dense, where the density could be adjusted to allow for sort of more infill development. If I'm remembering that correctly, Janet. Um, and I think that since that's something Janet has already looked at. Um, and that, that we had already sort of briefly looked at as a commission, that that might be a, a, a good place to start.
Yeah, so that might, that would be zoning district change, changes in some of the R four areas where, where lots don't. Comply with the current zoning, for example, is that what you're referring to?
Not exactly, I think that was a slightly different topic, that was, uh, there. David, I remember, if I'm understanding you correctly, there was an area where there was a planned subdivision where the lots as planned did not comply with zoning. I was referring to more generally. And Janet, this was something you had brought, more generally, there is some areas that, that could be rezoned. To, to allow for, for a tighter density, not necessarily, um. Where there are existing lots that don't comply, but where there could be room for existing lots, if my clarification makes sense.
Okay, no, that's, that's fair enough. And then, you know, another density idea is just allowing, uh. Additional units to be added in buildings in, in the R, I think it's the R twelve and R sixteen areas. Where, where it's already fairly dense, but if there's a building that. Would have a, on a unit added without changing the footprint of the building. And comply with the other requirements of the code, maybe the, the square footage of lot size per. Per unit could be waived. That was another, another thought with, with density. Uh, and I, so that's, those are some density things we could talk about is, is zoning changes in some areas and, and just a change that would. Perhaps short term allow more units to be put in existing structures.
Right, and I remind you all that our density is based on the property square footage. So I, I, if you recall, a month ago, two months ago, time goes by so quickly. Um, I made a reference to somebody on Eastern Avenue who wanted to convert. Um, four units and a boarding house to something other. And, um, they couldn't, so they got really creative and ended up keeping four by absorbing. The floors by, instead of stacked horizontally, they went vertically and got apartments with bigger bedrooms. Um, certainly that was a compromise, but this person had already received housing money. And so it changed his, his whole perspective on what he thought he could do. Um, I will try to see if Brandy will share her density map with me. Um, I believe at the time it was, uh, a density map based on. What was existing at the time and I can tell you, we've, we've added some apartments throughout, so. I can double check all that. If she doesn't, I think it behooves me to try to create our own. Existing on the ground density map, so we can actually talk about density in the appropriate manner.
Okay, Amanda.
That's something we could use the CVR, excuse me, CVR PC GIS hours to help with, Janet?
I don't know, Claire, I mean, it would be literally taking. Our, our grand list and then applying a number to each parcel in our city as to. How many dwelling units is in each of the, what do we have, thirty-eight hundred parcels? And I don't know if your staff would have that, uh. If Ashley would have, would have that kind of time and in, in, uh, a month to put that together for us. So it's a great question for sure. Or if I, like I said, if I can get my hands on Brandy's overlay, that makes this all that much easier, but. I, I can, I could try.
And, and Janet, um, uh, I'm happy to touch base with Ashley, um, or, uh, I can wait to hear from you. I'm happy to make that connection and, um, that is something that we can provide that assistance for. Um, and we can check and see how many hours you have and so forth, but happy to follow up with you, Janet, to be able to provide some assistance there.
Okay.
Perfect. Great.
Anything else on density? Sounds like that's something we can take on pretty soon. Yes, Tom.
We offer, um, Janet, I looked for this, uh, and it's a pretty big document. Do we offer, um, like density bonus points for clustered developments?
Um, you know, I thought we did, because we certainly talked about that quite a bit.
And I couldn't find it, so if you could either, and you know what, you don't have to do it now, you could just add it to, if, if we don't already. I think we should, so if you're going to.
We do not, Tom. It's a great question. Um, I literally have the, uh, unified development ordinance open and searched for the word density bonus. And nothing pops up, and I could, I know we talked about it, but it must be. Must be, we ended up deciding not to do that, so.
Yeah, so I'd, I'd just like to see that on our list of consideration, if we could, at least.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I think that that's a good idea. Um, I think that the stuff that you get out of the, um, out of the clustering is. You get exempted from certain other things you would need to provide, or you get to provide less by sharing it. I think that that's what's in the, in the ordinance, but I, yeah, I, I don't think there's a bonus and I think that it makes sense for there to be.
So, 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 so we'll add that to the density list and I think. Maybe we can start tackling that at, at our next meeting or work session. I'm, I'm just thinking. Devoting enough time to really have an in-depth discussion without trying to have votes on anything, but just simply. Um, talk through some of this stuff might be beneficial and, and then that would help. Uh, Janet or, or us to draft language that, that would accomplish some things we can agree on. Next item was parking and, and, you know, I'm hoping we can do something similar with that, Michael.
Sorry, I was, uh, um, uh. Sorry, thought I subcued up from my mouth, but I didn't. What I'm actually trying to say is, uh, I want us to, to review, um. Berry Town's zoning map when we look at our density. So I know I mentioned it a previous, uh, meeting, but I just wanted to bring up that it, it didn't come up. When we were, um, creating the current zoning maps. And looking at Berry Town's density adjacent to some of our neighborhoods, there's a clear gap where we, we have a dense downtown and then it falls off and then. Pops right up again at the border. I think trying to make that more contiguous would be beneficial to both communities.
Okay, and, and just as a caution, I think there's some things that are going to be shorter term. It can be pretty immediate changes and some things that might be. A little longer term, but I think, oh, you know, if we start talking about these things at a work session, some of the, some of those things will kind of pop out. And we'll, we'll know what, what is fairly short term and what is going to take some more, more work. I think the same is true with parking. Um, I think there might be some parking changes that would be fairly easy, but. Uh, you know, we're not the experts on parking and there's a traffic committee or some, you know, city committee that addresses parking lots and. And parking and, and they're going to have to get involved in this. You know, so for example, if the planning commission just said, we're going to eliminate any parking requirements associated with, with, um. Residential units, uh, that would be great till we had the first snowstorm in the winter. And, and, and there's a parking ban, so, you know, that would be an example. Yes, Janet.
Uh, so we had a parking team meeting, actually Monday morning, and I, and I had asked Carol, who's our unofficial chair of that group. To, uh, put that as an agenda item and we did talk about, um, if you recall, I said I was going to ask them. Um, as we talk about things is what would happen if the planning commission decided to eliminate. Parking minimums, parking in general. So what happens is essentially you put the parking problem on the city. You can, it's not only a snow thing, it's, it's also. We'll have to expand the number of meters for twenty-four hours in the winter, that becomes the problem. So then it morphs over into the, um. The, the parking ban, um, so it definitely is going to take, uh, um. I don't think we're, removing parking is definitely going to be the answer. I think it's going to be a bigger, bigger talk, bigger discussion.
Yep, uh, agreed.
Yep.
And the third, the third item that I had on, on the list of kind of shorter term things was, um. Oh, uh, accessory dwelling units. And my thought there is, I just think we should make sure that, um, our accessory dwelling unit language is up to current state statutes. Because it seems that they've changed, um, a few times, number one, and, and that's something Claire might be able to help with as well. Um, and then just, I, I guess my thought is to make sure that, that the zoning is not what is. Inhibiting people adding accessory dwelling units. There are plenty of other reasons why people might not want to. Um, but my thought is, we should, you know, it's easy to blame the zoning when that might not be the problem. So I think that's the purpose of, of exploring that. So does that make sense to people?
I can tell you the two folks that I'm working with are have, as of the middle of this week, about ADUs. They've discovered the cost of the new water service. Um. Is going to be what prohibits them.
Yeah.
Plus the building materials. But I'll make sure, uh, I've already reached out to, um, our mayor in his capacity as. Planning and policy manager to send me everything that, uh, got changed and he even had a, uh, he sent me the updated. Uh, presentation that he made back from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, which I, I think I, I. I would like to post on the city website, uh, so people, uh, have that available. And you folks be able to have your hands on it as well.
Yeah, okay, and, you know, maybe to kind of wrap this up, so. Are people comfortable with, with, um, doing some work sessions on these? Uh, you know, outside of the regular planning commission time. Jackie.
Um, yeah, I'm perfectly happy, but I'm wondering if also there might be some, um, written material. Some about this that maybe Janet knows about, or maybe Claire, you could send to Janet. On these topics, especially the, uh, density. Uh, because I know that's a topic that's coming up in a lot of towns as it relates to the housing issues. Um, that we could read before we come to these meetings, so we have a little bit more knowledge. Um, I, I guess on all these topics, there must be some. Um, I, I guess on all these topics, there must be some.
Yeah.
Current writing on it.
Yeah.
I'd appreciate that.
Okay, is that doable, Claire and, and Janet?
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, so I guess I will work with Janet to, to schedule some, some, uh. Some working sessions, um, that are, would, would be on probably, you know, if we meet the fourth Thursday, these might go back to being the second Thursday. Uh, same, same time, same, same way. Uh, do people, I guess they're public meetings, but I was going to suggest that I wanted to particularly invite some of the people who are involved in the. Housing task force who have particular interests and different pieces of this, uh, and also have some kind of on the ground knowledge to. You know, encourage them to attend some of these work sessions. So if that's okay, I think we can, we can move on, cause we're, we're at seven o'clock and, um. People only have so much capacity for, for concentrating on things, so at this point, um, we're to staff updates. Do you have anything for us, Janet?
I don't have anything now. Steve talked about the assessor and permanent administrator, so.
Okay, um, so then the next thing is roundtable. Do any planning commissioners have anything they'd like to bring up or chat about or questions? Yes, Becky.
I just wanted to ask about the materials that were in the packet about the Berlin zoning changes. Is that something? Um, we're, we're doing anything with, or was that more of like information, FYI information? Okay, thank you.
Great question, Becky, yes. Um, i- if you're not aware, Berlin created a new town center where the Berlin Mall is. And they wanna totally change that footprint to be housing and, uh, things like that. And so that is a notification from Berry Town to Berry City Planning Commission that they are holding a public hearing. As they, as they voted on their new town center, they have pieces and parts of their plans and zoning to, to change, and that's all that is. Thank you.
Uh, anything else from planning commissioners? Uh, Tom.
Yeah, Becky, I just wanted to, um, just wanted to welcome you again and promise you, it gets better. I, I, I promise. And, uh, and also, uh, thank my fellow commissioners for, for moving that window sign, uh, ordinance. Off of our plate, uh, for at least, what, another six months or so until. Thank you, everyone, I appreciate it.
And I would also like to, uh, thank the, the two people who have, who have sent a letter of interest to be on the planning commission for coming to the meeting. And evidently, we haven't scared you away yet, cause you're still here, so that's good. Anything else, uh, before we adjourn, Michael, did you have something else?
Uh, yes, just one thing. Um, I wanted to note that, uh, the Transportation Advisory Committee put together a, uh, an application for the CDRPC. To, um, to do a design study for traffic calming on Berlin Street between sixty two and Smith Street. And, uh, it looks like that is moving forward inside of the, you know, inside of their pipeline. So, uh, as we, we know more about it, I'll bring it to you guys, but I just wanted to, to let you know that that was, uh, that was happening.
Okay, thanks. Uh, is there anything else?
I, I actually do. I wanna congratulate Michael for stepping up and being the Berry City representative to the Regional Planning Commission tack. Um, that position was, was empty for a while, and, um. I- it certainly helps keep Berry City aware of what's going on at the regional level, so thank you.
Okay. Anything else? If not, we could have a motion to adjourn. Amanda makes motion. Uh, anybody second?
No, I wanna stay here.
Michael second, Michael second. So I'll call the roll again. Uh, Michael. Tom.
Aye.
Amanda.
Aye.
Jackie.
Aye.
Becky.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Everybody.
Hey, folks.